Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I apologize for starting late tonight. We had two things come up that closed exactly. We had no idea they were coming up and they were potential lawsuits, so they had to be called about. So I apologize. And this is probably the first time we've ever been, oh, this is the first time we've ever been this late. We've been five or 10 minutes late, but again, I apologize. So let's wing it.
Thank you. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, TL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to items to be presented.
Yeah.
We have a presentation of the Urban Enterprise Zone 2023 Budget Proposal by the Business Development Administrator Julianne Murray. You're up. You're welcome.
I don't know if I need this. I don't think I do, right?
Um, I would use it just like.
Oh, okay. Yep. All right. So that's good. Okay. So for fiscal year 2023, the city received $1,057,708. And there's a list of about 10 different ways the money can be used in the city, but it's basically to promote commerce and revive parts of the city and business in the city. So the law specifically says that 25% can be used for public safety, and that's what you had allocated last year. And that's going very well, and it looks like you'll have plenty of funds to have extra officers on Cookman, the Boardwalk, and Springwood Avenue, Thursday, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. And so I was proposing that you use the same percentage for next year. And hopefully, next year, the program can be started earlier. We didn't start it until May this year. It could be started earlier in the year, and you'll be able to get even more officers. And that's what Captain Desane and I have been talking about, specials to come and handle these foot patrols. One thing about all of these suggestions that I have here, these five suggestions, if at the end of the year, all the money isn't used, the city doesn't lose it. It just goes back into the state's zone allocation fund for Asbury Park. So even if it ended up that 25% of the funds was too much or was not going to be used, you would still be able to use it the following year. And then there's a 10% cap on how much of the budget you can use for zone administrative funds. So that's basically the personnel in the Urban Enterprise Zone office. Okay, then the three programs that I came up with were an employee retention stipend for employers that need to reduce their workforce during the winter months because it's not as busy, or if they're shutting down their operation to retool it or help it grow. And that would involve basically just matching any funds that the employer himself is giving. And so that allows us to make sure that we're going to use the money for stipends for employees that are important to the employer. And then there's a 25% max on all the employees for any one employer, so that many employers will be able to benefit from it. Then there's a business expansion and improvement loan. This is something that almost every urban enterprise zone in the state has, and it's a revolving fund that when the funds are repaid, it's called second generation funds, and then you can just keep reusing it and adding money to it with the budget from subsequent years. And then the final one was a Made in Asbury Park campaign and event. When I first came here and went to the first business committee meeting, we talked about all of the things that are actually manufactured here in the city or that have been and just recently relocated, but they still have a presence here in the city. And I came up with about 28 things, from guitars to furniture to, of course, beer and coffee and spirits, and wigs, and I just found out today about mambas, these percussion musical instruments. So if we were to gather all of these businesses and market them and promote them in the meantime, I think if you had a nice event in February or sometime in the winter months when it's not so busy here, you could have a showcase where these makers could showcase their products and even sell them if they wanted to. And then also, of course, as a ripple effect, notify all the restaurants that the Made in Asbury Park campaign will be that weekend, and there'll be more traffic in the city. So I prepared a little slide for each one in case you have any questions about any one of these. As I said, these are just suggestions, and the council is welcome to come up with their own ideas, of course. And if these were acceptable, the next step would be to draft resolutions and have you adopt these programs, and then they are submitted to the state Urban Enterprise Zone Board. Then they approve them, and then the funds are granted. And that's what happened last year with the lease subsidy program, which we just finalized the first application for a business that is taking advantage of the lease subsidy program. It's a new business in town that's going to be a yoga studio. And we also just received the first completed and looks like official and qualified application for the facade improvement also, and that's the pizzeria that's going to put up new signage and lighting out in front. So as you approved those programs last year, you would approve programs this year, and they'd be carried out the same way.
Okay. Thank you. Annie, I know I've asked you some questions already, and I'm going to ask you some more down the road, so I have none tonight. But when's your drop deadline where you'd like to have a final say from the council? Like, we're either going to do these or we're going to do extra. When do we have to get this plan into the state buy?
There's no deadline.
But the sooner the better.
The sooner the better, and especially with the, God bless you, the police and the administration, and the first two for the police money and for the administration, because then you want to have the money to pay the police and pay the urban enterprise zone.
Can you put it partial at a time?
Yes, those two you could put in.
Okay, good.
Yes, absolutely. And then the other three that you could discuss.
If you want to add, subtract.
Yeah, we could have a conversation about that. That's absolutely. So if that's the way you want to go, we could just do the public safety and the administration one.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Questions?
No, I really thought the one, I liked all of them. And I think the employee retention program is really interesting because I live next to the owner of Watermark down the street from the previous owner of Langosta, and one of the biggest problems since the pandemic has been employee retention. So I think that is, you know, really forward-thinking because they are all, at least from what I'm hearing, as a member on the business committee, everybody is really struggling with keeping employees. So I thought that was a, I think that's a really interesting idea.
That's, thank you. And it's wonderful because we'll just match whatever the employer, so like, for instance, the owner of Watermark, whatever employees he really needs to retain or it's important to retain, then we would just match that, and that shows that the money's going in a very needed place.
Good enough.
Great. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do me a favor. Grab the mic and just hold on. Hold on. We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes. First of all, good afternoon or good evening. Playing on Pines Fridays through August, there's a flyer that is on the website, and you can bring your kids and join in the fun with, I'm sorry, let me start again. You bring the kids and join the City of Asbury Park on Friday nights through August to play on Pine Street. Pine Street between the Second and Third Avenue will be open for jump roping, chop drawing, bikes, scooters, and a whole lot of fun. It is closed to traffic, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So bring your bikes, scooters, and helmets, and get ready to have some fun. Children must be supervised by an adult, weather permitting. Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman.
So any Asbury Park residents that are looking for employment, K. Hovnanian Construction Job Fair for the Baltic and the Aegean condominium projects will take place on Monday, 7/17, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the Boys and Girls Club on Monroe Avenue, and on Thursday, 7/20, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. in City Council chambers right here. Jobs are available in landscaping, paving, plumbing, electric, framing, mason, drywall, roofing and siding, windows, cleaning, painting, and more. Paid internships, apprenticeships, and scholarships are available, and that's for Asbury Park residents.
John, you going to talk about Family Day?
Yep.
And that's it for me. Thank you, everyone.
I mean, you go ahead.
No, it's yours now.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes, hi. The mayor's wellness committee.
There you go.
Is having a family fun day, and it's going to be this Saturday, which is July 15. It's at the beach, and it's going to be at the beach, the far end of Asbury Park. Bring your children, bring your beach blankets, and it's going to be all kinds of activities for the family. So please come out on Saturday to join us.
Eighth Avenue.
Eighth Avenue.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Just piggybacking on that, it's also sponsored by Surf Rider, who does, who all of their or many of their surf instructors come out and give free surfing lessons for kids of Asbury Park. So just want to also give them credit as well as the city for the event.
Thank you. Mayor Moore.
They both said what I was going to say, so I have to.
Thank you. Matters from acting city manager.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Kevin. Matters from city attorney.
And I have nothing either.
Thanks, Fred. We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to a public?
Move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your full name and address, and there's a three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Bear with me. I'm not going to use the mic. I'm just going to talk out. Shauna Family Letter, 1509 Park Avenue, Asbury Park. I did have, I came here two weeks ago. I had two people with me, two of my neighbors, but Grace is in out of state, and the other guy couldn't come. So I had her left. I wasn't going to read about the leave because it's juicy. But we had a violation in the mail to pull up our gravel. They extended. I take it a letter sent and they extended. But Richard, next door to me, he had his gravel for three years and no four years. No one said nothing to him. The other two people had their gravel for three and a half years. No one said nothing to them. I put my gravel down just because I don't have a water hole, and the grass burn is ugly. So my house looked nice, and I'm not trying to have the outside of my house look unattractive. So I put the gravel down thinking it'd be okay. They park on their gravel a little bit because parking's bad, so not, you know, their guests park on the gravel sometimes. So I said, this is a win-win. I have gravel, it looked nice, no grass, and maybe I can park one. So however, my neighbor next door, he's been harassing me for four years. I'm going to go past that. As soon as I get my gravel, he runs and tells the city that he's going to do a complaint, only on me, not on everybody, nobody else. He harassed the people that was renting my house out, and when everybody else was parking gravel, he just singled me out, the only person of color that lived over there. So it's a little bit more to this, but I just feel like y'all need to update the, maybe the ordinance about this gravel and this parking, because first y'all said, you can't park on the gravel, but you can have gravel. And the more he run down and complained, it seemed like everything is in his paper. Then now you can't even have gravel. I don't have money to pull a gravel, not in the middle of the season when I'm renting my house out. And I'm just trying to come back to my house in peace, and I'm being harassed, but that's a whole nother story. I'm going to read Grace's letter.
Okay. Be wary of your time.
I got, I read.
If you really just want to talk into the mic so it gets recorded.
Okay.
Thank you.
When Shauna and myself spoke to Mary Ann, and she's a nice person, and she's been really lenient with us, the main concern was the stones rolling off on the road and the other people tripping. Well, we were told the city is a big off-the-street parking, like, big on off-the-street parking. They then advised that the second complaint came after the first complaint was dropped. Okay, so I told y'all about the guy having gravel next door. He said, she said, the neighbor next door to me actually advised the Department of Zoning that he only wanted to complain about Shauna Family Letter's parking on the gravel and not us. And then Mary Ann said, you cannot weaponize Asbury Park for your personal vandalism. She's done it personally. So he turned around, he complained on everybody just because he wanted me to get me in trouble.
Okay, Ms. Family Letter, your time's up.
Well, can I say this last thing because it's important?
How long is the last?
Two seconds.
If it's one paragraph, yes.
It's not a paragraph. It's two seconds.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't even want to be up here. But, okay, so Jimmy said in front of Mr. Goodman, I do not want to report Grace, only her. That's what he said when the city official came out, and I didn't even know who he was because I would have stayed there and addressed the issue. So I don't know.
Have you ever emailed that?
Do it.
Have you ever, can we email that to the city so we can at least look at what you're reading? Yeah, yeah. Wait, about from your neighbors that are talking about stones too, right?
Oh, we all in a group text and was talking about trying to, you know, keep our stone now. The two were, they own here in the summer. They rent the house, they own the house, and they there in the summer, and they have a headache with trying to pull a gravel.
Okay, okay. We got it, but we can't, I appreciate that Grace couldn't make it tonight. Appreciate you reading her letter. She can come to the next meeting and express, you can email to us like Amy said, and the law of the city is you cannot park on your front yard.
Well, but.
No, 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 no.
It don't say that you can't have gravel. You just can't park on the front yard, and nobody's parking on you.
Okay, so from what I've been told is planning and sample this, and everybody was given to August to remove the gravel.
No, it was till.
The end of August. Okay, the end of August, September.
I don't have, I'm.
Hey, hey.
Okay, but there's other people with gravel in their area.
But then you're going to, it's not just going to be you, it's going to be everybody.
Everybody on their side, not in my complex. There's other people with gravel in the yard.
Everybody, everybody.
So that's going to be a big problem for law enforcement.
Okay. Thanks.
Maybe y'all should change the ordinance or something because it's old. You know, parking is a problem.
Go ahead, read it.
Okay.
Yep.
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. First, I want to say, everybody knows who I'm going to talk about, the Shade Tree Commission. They're doing a very good job. It has nothing to do with the workers. It has something to do with the way your ordinances are written. Now, I have four of them there, four ordinances that say, every one of them says something different. Well, one of them is the state ordinance. I called up the state, the Federation of Shade Tree Commission, and she told me that every town has their own ordinance. So why do we need a state ordinance? And then it says that they have the power, but then if you read down on D, it says that the mayor and council, but they call them the governing body, which is you have two names instead of one. Nowhere in any of those does it say the city manager has anything to do with the Shade Tree Commission, not one word, not mentioned at all. But what I want to say is whoever is in charge of the Shade Tree Commission, he has too much responsibility. He has to check the water. He has to check the police department. That's all in your ordinance. I don't think, he's a very good gardener. I don't know if he has any other title, but it's not fair that he has to do all that. And then you have people driving our city vehicles. You don't know if they're insured. You don't know if they have a driver's license. You don't know anything about them. They get in the car every morning, they're parked around the corner on Emery Street. It's not a good idea. These cars are uninsured on the street. We all know that. They have to be in the public, they have to be in public property. And the other thing it says in the ordinance about the right-ofways, which we all know about the right-ofways, I think. And how is he going to go on somebody's property and tell them that their hedges have to be cut or he could cut them? It's sort of, it's not a good thing. You have to rewrite that ordinance and make it very clear. And what's about the disclaimer in one of them? You're not responsible for the codes. They might not be right. I never saw that in an ordinance, a disclaimer. Does anybody know about that? I was shocked when I read that. But I'm glad we have the Shade Tree Commission, but you have to change that ordinance and make it clearer. They're not allowed to put cement in the parks. The park benches that are yellow, they're supposed to be green. And since when does volunteers paint them? We don't have enough employees? We have 300 employees. We don't have enough for one little mile?
Rita, your time's up.
Okay. But that ordinance isn't clear. It's not his fault.
I kind of agree with you, and I think it's something we're going to look into. As you know, and been told, the environmental Shade Tree Commission does not meet regularly in the summertime because they're out there maintaining the 29 beautiful parks they built. So they don't have meetings, but it's something when they do get back, it's something like, we'll have a discussion with them about, with Fred and everything, and maybe we should look at the ordinances and redo them. And why the state has an ordinance? The state has ordinances on everything, so I mean, that's one. Ask the governor. I can't answer that one. As far as the.
They don't have an office.
As far as the volunteers driving the trucks, they are insured. I know that because I asked the city manager that myself personally over a year ago. So yes, anybody driving a city truck, and they're on the city's insurance through our JIF and our PMA and all of our insurance companies. So anybody out there driving any city vehicle is definitely insured and has a license.
Okay, but we can't park around Emery Street. They have three spaces. That's not fair.
Okay, well, that's something we can look into.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sylvia Sylvia, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. Is Julianne still here? Yeah, she can watch the video later. You guys, what a fantastic job you did finding Julianne. She has really hit the ground running. She's been such a great person to collaborate with on things and even helped me as a business in town. We moved our office, and I could not figure out on the UEZ website how to change our address, and she just, two days ago, took care of it for me, walked me through it in 30 seconds. I had spent two days looking for it. She's really been spectacular. But what I actually came here for was last Friday, I got a call asking me to meet the New Jersey Sea Grant Consortium on the boardwalk in an hour because they had just finished their tallying of New Jersey's favorite beaches, and Asbury Park has won once again for Monmouth County. We've won every year, every year since I've been here, and I'm sure before that. We have a really good, lighthearted competition with the other shore towns. Ocean City has won the state again, so I did my requisite trash talking on the radio and promised them that we were coming for them. So I'm going to have to pay that check someday. So I just wanted to congratulate you. I did get feedback about why Asbury Park wins best beach in Monmouth County, and because there's a lot of really nice beaches in Monmouth County. The whole shoreline has really great beaches. What I've gotten is they're clean, they're well-protected by the lifeguard staff as well as APPD, the variety of food options on the boardwalk, the options for family activities, particularly Splash Park. It's a very welcoming community, and the overall cool vibe. And that actually, that phrase repeated by like multiple people specifically, cool vibe of Asbury Park. So congratulations. This is all a reflection on you guys, so thank you for that.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing to everybody's attention. Every year we get an email saying, hey, we're giving out the awards in Ocean City. If you want to, like, come down here at 8:30 in the morning. I'm like, hell, I got about four o'clock to make it to Ocean City by 8:30. So we never attend, so Sylvia gets them and brings them back. And as far as like the best beaches and everything, and we know very little bit about, but I'm going to tell you today, our fantastic lifeguards, our fantastic fire department EMS made a save that was this close to a drowning. So again, that ocean with the rips and everything and the currents is very dangerous. Don't go swimming unless it's a protected beach. Listen to the lifeguards. But again, my kudos, and Kevin let us know that, again, EMS, fire, and our lifeguards saved a life today. So Kevin, thank you, and thank your staff.
That's wonderful.
And thank the lifeguards for us. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Kevin. Congratulations.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Can I go to the next?
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you rather have the hands? Yeah, okay.
I'll sit back there like a normal person.
Okay. Thank you, Fred.
Brian Cummings, Lavalette. I love Asbury Park, and I love coming up to see the music here, but the handicap parking situation is horrible. If I see a spot closer to the venue than I'm going to, that's a regular spot, I get a ticket. Most towns around here, Point Beach, Seaside High, Seaside Park, Red Bank, don't give you tickets. don't give you tickets for parking in regular spots. Me, if I see a spot right outside the door to the pony, I can't park there. It's brutal. There's no reason why it can't be like everybody, Key West, no parking at all down there. And they honor the system of letting the handicapped people park for free. I parked at the Wonderbar. Well, I went to a show on the Wonderbar on June 2nd. And I couldn't find the handicap spots that I was supposed to be able to access because you had the cruising night and all the spots that were handicapped had cars parked in them, hot rods or whatever you want to call them. And they didn't get tickets. But if I had parked in a regular spot, I would get a ticket. I don't know, I heard that you guys used to not give tickets years ago for parking in a regular spot if you're disabled. And now you do. So, is it all about the money or is it just about compassion when you let us park in regular spots? So, I wish you can do something about the situation for the disabled to be able to park in a regular spot, like a handicap spot without paying a fee. Like I said, it's just a spot right by the pony and I need to go out to my car and get medicine. I gotta go two, three blocks away just to go out to my car to get whatever I need to get because it's inconvenient. But if I see a spot right by the pony, I have to pay. Has this been the situation forever?
I'm not going to answer you until you're done with all your questions and your time. I don't want to take any time.
I'm pretty much done. I got it up my chest.
Okay. Yes, well, number one, I appreciate you.
You understand the gist of it with...
Excuse me? Okay. So, yes, it's always been that way since we started meter parking. I got to disagree with you. Not every town, especially in this area.
Only Seabright and Asbury Park. Red Bank.
Belmar, Long Branch.
Belmar, I asked the police. They said it's fine for me to park in a regular spot.
I can give you other towns, Long Branch. So, we're not the only ones. We are looking into perhaps adding more handicap spots.
And all that, I go to the Asbury and I go to Asbury Lanes. Asbury Lanes, there's not a handicap spot with two, two, three blocks.
I don't know.
In front of the Asbury Hotel, there's no handicap spots at all except for by the lake, there's one, which there's somebody always in.
We can get you a map where they're at and everything.
I've already driven around here in the wintertime and I located all the spots. Whatever you know at the summertime.
We will look into it and see what we can do. And you bring a good issue. On Thursday nights, and Kevin, hey, put this on you, being acting city manager, but these Thursday nights for these car shows, if they're parked in...
I have pictures.
If they're parked in handicap spots, yeah, they should be chased. And when they have these car shows on Thursday nights, are they paying the meters or is this like a free-for-all? Do they pay the meters? Does anybody know?
I had to call the guy that was on, in the band at the Wonderbar that night and I asked him if I can get permission from Debbie to park in the lot behind the Wonderbar. After a half hour of driving around frustrated, I was almost ready to leave, but then I called the parker man and then they let me into the gate and parked there. And it's not very accommodating for the disabled.
No, I agree with you. And I know Thursday nights have become very popular for the old-time cars and everything, but it's...
I love the old cars.
It's a question, yeah, but they shouldn't be given extra privileges that you, me, anybody given, like if I got to pay for parking, they should pay for parking. Also, if they're not handicapped, they shouldn't be in a handicap spot. So, I'm glad you raised the issue. We'll look into that.
And if there's anything you can do with not having to pay if you're at this, if there's a spot right outside the stone pony and I'm going there that night, I can't park in that spot. I have to drive around to find a handicap spot. It just doesn't seem fair.
Okay. Got it? We'll look into it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Adam Weisberg. It's good to see some of you, some of you I've made acquaintances in the past. I am with WK Enterprises. And with me tonight is my wife Cheryl and my friends Rick and Amy. And Rick is also my law partner. We are here today to make an inquiry about marijuana dispensaries, recreational marijuana dispensaries, as to whether the city council would be considering to opt-in. Reason why I ask is we have a great deal of information that we can share with the city council to work with it. I understand that you've already met with a union representative, Mr. Hughes, or heard from him, I should say, that we are working with. They are with the local union to represent workers in the marijuana industry. WK Enterprises has a company called Canterbury Park LLC. And we have a micro dispensary license. I want to bring it here to Asbury Park if Asbury Park will have us, if they opt-in. I have a long history here, been coming to Asbury Park, been involved in Asbury Park since 1969. So, to me, this is home. My wife Cheryl also agrees with me. And I, Amy and Rick have gotten to know Asbury Park and they call it their second home as well. Indeed, we opened up an office on Springwood until we lost our lease, but now we're all going over to Madison Avenue. With that being said, Canterbury Park would be over, we're looking to move into 1719 Main Street. And with us is the new owner of the building, Lucas, who is from J&amp;L Capital, who just closed on the property and has offered us a lease. And we want to take the necessary steps to come to Asbury Park. But before we can even go for a planning amendment, we are urging the city council to consider opting in so we can get a letter to give it to the CRC, who is the agency who issued us our micro dispensary license. Now, I intend to not just open up a place here. I intend to become part of the business community again, as I once was, and to contribute to the community. I've listened very intently about labor shortages you were talking about. We have already approached Interfaith Neighbors about meeting people to come work for us through them to supply us with a labor force. We start out with 10 employees. We make it past the two-year mark. We can expand and we can expand it to bring in more people to work for us. In addition, we intend to buy a great deal of our supplies locally from Asbury Park or the surrounding areas and be responsible for the sales tax. That's all I really had to say. I just wanted to say hello and to see if I could encourage the city council to considering opting in.
No, deeply appreciate. And just one small correction. We didn't meet with the union. They came to a meeting and introduced themselves just like you are now. And they were very nice. Two weeks ago, the union represented them. So, it's very nice. We took their cars and we told them, as soon as we're close to opting in, we'll let them know. And I'll tell you the same thing. As soon as we're close to opting in, we'll let you know. But I don't see that being anytime soon. That's because of litigation or pending litigation. And that's all I'm going to say. And if Fred wants to say anything more about it, I'll let him go. But I think that's as far as I can go.
I understand. Just so you understand, we're not the medical marijuana folks.
Nope, but we're being sued by somebody to, so...
For lots of reasons.
So, many of our attorneys, and that's why we're late starting tonight, because we got another federal law case tonight. So, on the advice of our attorneys, we're doing nothing because this is solved. So, when that's solved, I don't, if I knew that, I'd be playing the powerball right now. But I appreciate you with your interest. I know your background and everything. And when we're close, you'll get a phone call.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Where's 1719 Main? I'm trying to picture.
Oh, you know where a meeting tomorrow is? Next to the LifeCycle? That building. 1719 Main Street. It's right next to the LifeCycle place.
Oh, that's 17, oh, 17-19. Okay, I'm thinking 1719 is like in Allenhurst. Okay. I'm going 17, we got 1300 bucks, Convention Hall, four more bucks. It's 8,000. There's no stores there. Okay, 1719 Main Street. Okay, I know the building well. Well, good luck.
Thank you, sir.
And again, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
And bells like to be heard. See nobody make a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
On favor? Thank you. Public transportation portion is now closed. We're now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of June 28, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have resolutions 2023-368 and 2023-369, where 2023-369 is, 368, excuse me, is a resolution authorizing appointments to the Asbury Park TV Cable Advisory Committee. The appointees are Alyssa DeLeo and Michael Sedano, both with a term to expire December 31, 2023. Do I have a motion for consent?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now into individual resolutions. I have resolution 2023-370, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2023-348, resolution authorizing professional services contract to the Rogers Group Lexipol for police training.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2023-352, resolution to amend resolution 2023-310, awarding contract for professional service analysis of impediments to fair housing choice.
Move it.
Right.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-371, resolution authorizing a contract with Jersey Professional Management for executive recruitment services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-372, resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park, referring a proposed revised electric vehicle ordinance to the city of Asbury Park Planning Board and directing the planning board to take certain actions pursuant to the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-373, resolution in opposition to the proposed Kiesby Energy Center and seeking competitive power ventures to pursue a renewable power generation facility.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-374, resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter into a third amendment of the subsequent developer agreement with AP Block 4001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC to extend the outside approvals date in connection with the development of property located at Block 4001, lots 2 through 15, currently Block 4001, lots 2.01, 2.02, and 2.03. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now into ordinances, second reading slash public hearing. I have ordinance 2023-25, bond ordinance, amending and supplementing bond ordinance number 2022-8, which provides for the transportation utility improvements heretofore finally adopted by the city council of the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, the state of New Jersey on June 8, 2022, to increase the appropriation by $600,000 and to increase the authorization of bonds or notes by $600,000. And here to provide a brief overview is Jason Harzal from TNM.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
The increase to the bond ordinance is a necessity for this project. Bids for the project came in approximately $590,000 in excess of what the city originally budgeted for the project. There were a few reasons. In hindsight, we can see that this potentially happened. Over the past few years, there have been a significant increase in material costs and labor costs associated with construction projects. And when we apply to NJDOT for municipal aid funding, NJDOT does not fund sanitary sewer improvements. So, when we send our estimate, excuse me, to DOT, we do not include those sanitary sewer improvement funds. Somehow inadvertently during the process, when we provided our proposal and our suggested bonding amount, the sanitary sewer improvement piece was not included in that estimate. So, a combination of the sanitary sewer improvements plus the increase in the cost of material and labor generated a, an excess of our original estimate for the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on bond ordinance 2023-25?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public hearing on bond ordinance 2023-25 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone. State your name and address for the record.
Move to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on bond ordinance 2023-25 is now closed. Motion to adopt ordinance 2023-25.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Question.
Yes.
So, Jay, this is directed right at you because I'm getting my back busted about 8th Avenue. So, I've been replying to people. This was held up at the state level and we're adding the $600,000 tonight and we should be starting this work by mid-August. Am I, am I correct? Okay, we're on TV, everybody. You heard it. Mid-August, 8th Avenue and other streets should be started. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yeah. Yes, excuse me.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now on to ordinance 2023-26, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Toll Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC and granting a tax exemption for property known as Block 3101, Lot 1, 407 Lake Avenue. Here to provide a brief overview is the Director of Planning and Redevelopment, Michelle Alonso.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the public. This is the financial agreement for the 30-year pilot for new townhouse development on the waterfront, fronting Cookman Avenue, Lake Avenue, Grand Avenue, and Hex Street. There's, this is the standard pilot that is dictated in the master redevelopment agreement.
Thank you.[1654.52] May I have a mo-
Oh, go ahead.
No, thank you.
May I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-26?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-26 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, um, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public hearing on ordinance 2023-26 is now closed. Motion to adopt ordinance 2023-26.
Move, move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now into ordinance 2023-27, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth and the state of New Jersey, providing for the special assessment of the cost of certain wastewater, stormwater, roadway, streetscape, utility, and other infrastructure improvements on Block 3103, Lot 1, within the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area and establishing a mechanism for payment of the cost thereof. And Michelle will also provide a brief overview on this. Thank you.
This, um, again, this is the complimentary ordinance to the financial agreement. This is the required special assessment for the waterfront area for for sale housing projects.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-27 is now open. Any member of the public wishes to speak, please use the microphone.
Move to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public hearing on 2023-27 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-27?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-28 is an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 17 entitled Communication Facilities Right-of-Way Permits of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Um, city attorney Fred Raffetto, is he able to provide a brief overview on this?
Yes. Um, in April of 2022, the city council adopted an ordinance governing, uh, small wireless facilities within the city, uh, basically dealing with, um, the advent of 5G and the poles necessary to support 5G service. Um, since the city adopted that ordinance, we have, uh, brought onboard, um, a 5G consultant who is a radio frequency engineer, and he made certain recommendations to the city for updating that ordinance. And, um, the revisions make it clear that it's the intent of the city to require colocation of communications facilities on existing poles whenever possible, which determination shall be made by the city's radio frequency engineer rather than to allow the installation of new poles within the city's right-of-way. And also, um, that, um, any applicant who intends to install new communications facilities or poles within the public right-of-way must first demonstrate the need to the satisfaction of the city's radio frequency engineer, uh, for that construction and that this need cannot be met through the use of an existing pole. So basically, we felt that these additional revisions make the city's ordinance a stronger ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-28?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-28 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public hearing on ordinance 2023-28 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-28?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn. Deputy Mayor Quinn. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
No one has anything else? We're on to adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Meeting's adjourned.